So you can understand it. When we started out many years ago, we talked a lot about maximum pain. Some of you might remember, I think Sammy was quite excited about this subject at the time. And I think quite a lot of you were starting to understand this concept of max pain. In terms of trading ideas, well, max pain led to a lot of other things. Ultimately, a max pain, the concept of max pain led to a lot of ideas and developments that led to other things. And it was just basically a rabbit hole, which sometimes you, as you well know, when you're trading, sometimes you go down a rabbit hole with a direction and it doesn't go anywhere. And sometimes you go down a rabbit hole and suddenly you find yourself in a location that actually makes some sense. And that's what we're here for is to try and make sense of trading, the real world of trading, as opposed to this fictitional retail world where things happen. Well, max pain is a real thing. The idea that market makers know where max pain is. And why are we even talking about max pain? Is max pain something to do with the max process? Well, it's not actually, believe it or not, the max process is actually named after Max Headroom, one of my role models growing up and somebody I modeled myself on. But Max Headroom was one of my heroes. And of course, the fact that it happens to be Max is simply because of that reason. But it comes down to the fact that max pain is a real thing. Now, what is max pain? And why would it be a real thing? Well, let's take a look at this concept in a simple paper that was written a while ago by fastercapital.com. And this is the paper here. It's a very simple paper. It's, yeah, I don't intend to go into the detail of it because it's not that relevant in terms of reading the whole damn thing. It's quite lengthy. But here's an introduction to the max pain theory. Max pain theory is a concept that's been gaining traction amongst traders and investors in the stock market as a theory that is based on the idea that market makers manipulate stock prices to keep them below a certain level, causing traders to lose money. This theory has been around for a long time, but basically it's gained more attention recently due to the rise of retail trading and the impact of social media on the stock market. The idea of course here is that vested interest in keeping the prices of a stock below or above, it doesn't necessarily have to always be below, below or above a certain price level because they've sold options or bought options or they have an option exposure or indeed a delta exposure or a underlying exposure. And this is the most important aspect of this in terms of trying to figure out this idea. Now, what does this actually mean in terms of what you're going to be looking at today? Why is the max pain something that we haven't talked about for a while? Why are we now talking about it now? Because at the core, this is the idea of the max process, the idea of max process to understand, of course, the concept of market manipulation to achieve certain outcomes. The key to this is understanding that the markets therefore need to do one thing and one thing only. Any ideas? Well, you've already read a little bit about what the market maker needs to do. What does the market maker need to do? They need to cycle the price around. They need to cycle price. Now, there's an awful lot of cyclical indicators. We'll go into a little bit of a little bit of background about cyclical indicators. We haven't invented the wheel, by the way. There was a large conversation we had in the room about what we were using. And we were quite clear at the time, we were using a couple of things which we were going to be talking about in the classroom, of course, this afternoon. So why are we interested in this process? Well, take a look at today's S and P, for example. Just take a look at today's S and P here. Okay, I don't mean it to have any real relevance, except for the fact that you can see that there are very two very large shaded areas on this chart. Now you might saying, okay, so what are those two very big, large shaded areas? Well, if you look at today's tweets, you'll recognize that if we look at the S and P, you'll recognize that the S and P had an, had the large level on the screens at 5641 to 43. Remember, these are the prices that are currently trading. So there's no point in looking at the ones outside of these prices because these are the ones that traded today, right? So 5643 to 41 and 5615 to 5612. And you can see that the level of importance is given simply via code which says M. M, okay. So M's just the more M's, the more important the level is to us. And of course, the more important the level is, the more important this level is based on the max pain concept. That's why we're starting with this. So what's important about this max pain concept? Well, importance is very simple. If you put yourself in the position of a market maker who needs to hedge an exposure, they have one of two choices, either they hedge if the price goes against them or they defend if they think they've got the opportunity to defend. If they hedge, they simply don't make any money. If they defend, then of course, there's a chance that they're doubling down into a losing position. Now, why are these two prices important? Because these two prices were posted at midnight London last night. So in other words, effectively, what about eight hours ago? Eight hours ago, my God, and it's not eight hours ago, it's 20 hours ago. Okay, so these levels were posted 20 hours ago. And it's timestamped there on Twitter, so you can see it for yourself or X. It's C for itself there, 12:09 is midnight London, midnight London 27th, which is today, of course. So these levels are already known to as as maximum pain levels. In other words, what we're looking for is to see whether price rotates between these key price points, the key price points in this case, 5640s, low 40s to 5615s to 10s. So let's take a look again at today's S and P and see how we get on. So there's the 5640 at the top edge there, you can see it for yourself, 5642. So you'll remind yourself, just so that we know, 5642, 5641 to 43 was that level on the S and P. So 5641 to 43, which is this shaded area, is a level that we know is a maximum pain level. And at the bottom edge, we have the next maximum pain level, which is 5612 to 5615. 5612, we're not making any shut up here. There's 5612 and there's 5615 right there. And obviously, that's a level that we know about last night at midnight. So if we look at those two levels, you can see we went from a rejection of the break higher here, which means that the dealers were able to rotate it off that rejection at 40s, take it all the way back down to 14s for ultimately a profit of 30 points. And then take it from 14s all the way back to 40s for another profit of 30 points. And then they tried to think about rotating in here, which obviously it didn't work out that well. And obviously, the price doesn't always rotate, but the basic idea is the market maker has one of two choices. Do I defend or do I hedge? And that's it, that's all their choices are. If you're in a long position or a short position in options, you only have one option. And that is, you know, what am I going to do to make sure I make money? And there are only two possible trades, either you protect it or you chuck it in the bin. Or you try and hedge it by, by hedging, that's what I mean, chuck it in the bin. You basically think that you're not able to protect it by doubling down. And therefore you start watching to see what happens next. Now, this is all very good. It sounds awfully like the RGL process. And you say, but the RGL process, what do we, how do we know what they're going to do in these areas? How do we know how they're going to deal around these areas? And that's when we start recognizing that the market is always cycling in and around these big cyclical maximum pain areas. Every single major, every single major market, and it's, it's not unexpected that we've suddenly been able to pull away out the top edge here and the bottom edge here. The guys will tell you that these levels repeat often and almost every single day we get some massive swings away from and around these areas. Well, that's a, in its own right, that's a 60-point move on the S and P, which is, as you know, a very, very substantial profit of $3,000 per contract just from the sell trade rejection into the buy trade rejection and then an exit right there. And this is from the London session open to about an hour and a half, two hours into the US session. What happens if it goes above? Well, of course, what you're expecting is the price will now trade in that area before it rejects again. And you can see that when it rejected, they managed to hold the price offered. They've taken it back inside here. You can see that they've rejected in here and they've tried to take the price back down for a cycle. Why does the market need to cycle? Well, the whole world of trading is based on the market having an ability to cycle around prices. If the market can't cycle, the market ceases to exist. Why is that the case? So you can see what happened again. You can see we've came back up to that level again. You can see it's obviously, it's created a new level at the top edge here, which obviously is where the selling is actually coming in. So it's a perfect example of how to make a lot of money by just recognizing what they do at certain prices. So now that we kind of understand the power of the cycling process, what do we use it for? What value does it have, if any? And that's obviously probably the most important question that we have as traders. Seeing a price reject off a higher, seeing price rejecting off a low doesn't mean we're always trying to fade top edges and bottom edges. Nay, in fact, on the contrary, the guys in the room saw a trade in the classroom this morning, sorry, in the classroom this afternoon, London time. And this was a trade here where we went short oil at $76. You might remember it if you were in the room earlier on today. This was a live room call where we were illustrating a trading concept of being able to press into certain trade areas. Now, obviously, if you were to look at that trade in isolation, you might say, well, you know, big wow, did it make any money? Five contracts when we took the screenshot was already in profit to the tune of $1,000. Well, of course, yes, it did make some pretty interesting cash. If you were to look back at the trade chart at that stage, you may well be surprised to see what did happen next. And this is the trade just here. So this was the trade in the classroom. We started to sell this at 1645, 1700 hours. This was the sell trade here at 1700 hours. You can see the price 7601. You can see the conversation we were having there at 7601. And obviously, the price dropped all the way down to 7550s for a profit ultimately of $500 per contract. And on a little five lot trade, that's a $2,500 profit on that swing. Pressing the advantage when the value flipped on us, when the value flipped, because I was long earlier into the bottom edge, I was long in here. And then we flipped into the short sell, we talked about it in class. And that was the live trade outcome in the room. And we used the concept of extending the cycle from 76 to 7550, wholesale to wholesale prices. But what gave us the heads up? All of this is very good and very interesting, but what would you have been able to do to get that $2,500 paid into your account? What would you have been able to do to get that three grand today paid into your S and P account if you traded those dealer cycles? That's ultimately what everybody needs to know. One of the biggest challenges, I think, for people coming into this room is the fact that we spend a lot of time going over the concept of relative value. Of course, it's the most important concept. We did a big chat about it in, in terms of finding value narratives. And obviously, you guys have all experienced relative value when you've been in classes previously. So what we needed to focus or refocus our attention on is execution. For a lot of people, they can see values available, but they still can't find their way into trades. Even now, we still need to keep plugging away at this as a process. Learning execution is the same as a basketball player learning to shoot. You're never finished. It's the same as the golfer learning on the golf driving range before the British Open or the US Open takes place. They're always practicing, they're always fine tuning, they're always keeping their eye in. The markets are sometimes very volatile and you have to be careful. And the markets sometimes are pretty dull and you have to be careful. You have to have a different type of ability to see different things at different prices. Today's classroom was about recognizing weak buyers and weak sellers. So every day we try and find something brand new to talk about. As you probably know, if you've been in the classroom, we're always investigating new and different ideas. Well, one of the main ideas we've been focusing guys' attention on recently was the concept of the market cycling. So this takes us to this process that we've started to develop called the max process. Is it maximum pain? Well, it's actually based on the maximum pain process, the idea that the market maker is really intending to cycle prices as much as possible. And the reason for that is pretty straightforward. We did a, we did a little tweet and I don't intend to redraw it for you guys tonight because obviously it was, it was, well, it would take up most of the time that we've got allotted for today's classroom anyway. But the idea of the tweet was very simple. It was to try and understand a simple market structure, which obviously a lot of people claim that they know about. And then, of course, then we're starting to try and understand the concept of conscious decision making. And this is what the tweet looked like. This is what the trade, the trade looked like. So this is the basic idea of institutional trading. The idea of institutional trading, if you've ever looked at a COT, if you've ever looked at a probability distribution, if you've ever looked at market profile, if you've ever looked at any type of a professional trading in any way, shape or form, the idea is simply, and this is all verifiable, of course, if you look at your COT, you'll see for yourself, this is how it works. It doesn't mean the market is going to be trending in a sideways motion. That's not what cycling means. I think a lot of people think immediately they hear about the market cycling, they immediately think that the market is stationary. It goes from a swing high to a swing low, back to the same swing high, back to a different, same or close to swing low. And the price is always cycling around a simple price, which is the process. And the problem with things like market profile is you have this flat surface. And inside that flat surface, we obviously talked about the institutional buying as the price drops, the institutional buying as the price rallies, turning into what is basically a fair value price in the middle. And then the institutional selling passively as the price rallies. And then the institutional selling as the price drops back into the fair value. And then the vice, the opposite turns out to be true. And this was a classroom conversation we actually had in class when I was talking about institutional selling on something like the NASDAQ this day. And it was a big question, actually, a really, really interesting question because it opened up this whole chart. And it was a question from somebody in the room asking, why did you sell the NASDAQ? Remember the question? Why the hell basically did you sell the NASDAQ? It looks like an absolute suicide trade. And obviously, the idea was well on the face of it for a retail trader, it probably was a suicide trade, right? Because what we were looking at was the, these sell trades here. This was their live conversation we were having in the London session at the time. And it was a perfectly valid question. I'm not having any, any dismissive of the question itself. This question was perfectly valid and it was perfectly justifiable. But it opened the door to this conversation about how institutions or commercials trade. Now, you can't trade like, a lot of you guys can't trade like this because, well, obviously, if you're building a position, it's quite a sizable position you're talking about here. You might not be able to see the numbers, but that is worth a lot of money at the top edge. But anyway, you can see how that sale developed. This was a long-term sell, it was a short accumulation. And you can see what happened after the conversation with the, with the people in the room. There was this massive collapse in the S and P or the NASDAQ and the NASDAQ at the time. And there was an enormous profit made on that short sell. But it's made up of simple, smaller cycles. Inside of these cells, there was a sell in here which we scratched. There's a little dollar sign there, you might not be able to see it. There was a sell in here which we made some nice profit. There was a sell in here, made some nice profit. There was a sell here, made a small profit at scratch. There was a sell at the top edge and then there was a sell at the pullback. Marcus, exactly. Marcus was to completely blame for the entire classroom. But it was a perfectly valid question because for retail traders, it looked like all you're doing is fading into oblivion. And for retail traders, that's actually what is probably the truth of the matter is you'd probably be fading into oblivion. Now, I want Marcus to actually confirm that this was a real-time chat. This conversation was real time before, before this drop took place. So it's not a hindsight conversation we're talking about here. It was in the London session as the price rallied. Because that's what Marcus couldn't figure out. He says, I don't understand why you're selling this. It's a top line, it's a weak seller. And we did a big classroom today on this weak sell. And then it brought to the fault, the point that it was actually a short sell accumulation for a big commercial. But inside of those shorts, it's difficult for you guys to stick around long enough to see how these trades play out. And that's the truth. It really is difficult for you guys to stick around to see these trades playing out. So what's the solution? Well, the problem is that you would have seen what 25 different market divergences on your MACD. You'd have seen 25 different overbought situations on your stochastic. You would have seen divergences, you would have seen wave five corrections, you'd have seen all sorts of stuff that would have tried to get you into different trades at different points all the way through that entire process. When we started to look at that, one of the key aspects was let's try and make first of all, as first, first and foremost, let's try and make fading safe. You might say, it's impossible, Nick. Welcome back in, Nick. Hope you're doing well in, in your job. But it's almost impossible to fade safely, right? I wouldn't disagree with that. I would not disagree. We actually have said many times in live classrooms over and over again that it should be almost impossible for you guys to fade. I want to show you one of the outcomes from the max process. I want to just show you one of the outcomes from the max process for today's market. So we're not cherry picking any key examples. And I want to show you if I can find the bloody chart. The best laid plans, guys, and all that kind of shit. So let's see if I can find the chart. It is about somewhere, what was it, S and P? I'm looking for, sorry, I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the NASDAQ. Okay, so here it is here. Let's take a look at these boxes. Now, you might say, okay, this looks awfully familiar. Look at these boxes. What do you see about those boxes? Number one, they're all fades, right? They're all fade sell trades. But what else do you see about those boxes? They all make some money, right? Every one of those boxes makes some money, whether it's a lot of money or just a bit of change or whatever, it's still money. It's still making money on a fade trade signal. So if you were to sell into this box here, you can see we went, and this is the S and P, not the NASDAQ. We're going to be looking specifically at the NASDAQ signal because that's the one that's finished at this point. But you can see that if we use the NASDAQ signal for equities, as in the S and P here, we would have been selling here at 25s, the price actually dropped down to 12s. Well, that's 13 points, that's 650 bucks, guys. The sell trade into this little box area here was about 30, trades down to 24. That's about a six-point move, that's another $300. And then another $300 and then a few hundred dollars here. And then this big sell trade at 48s down to a low price ultimately of about 28s. It's about $1,000 in there. And then we've had two sell trades in here. This trade here went from 47s to a low price of 42s for 250 bucks. And then this sell trade in here at 48s, trading 40s for about 400 bucks. So if we tally all of those swings up, you're probably talking in excess of about nearly $3,000 per contract. Would that be fair? Maximum swings, I'm not talking about what you would have made. I'm talking about what the maximum swing potential could have been had you taken all of those trades. Now, if we look at that as a simple process and you say, well, that really is safe fading. Well, that was the first objective of our process was to try and find areas where we actually reach to these points here. Areas where we reach this point here. So instead of trying to sell on the way up like an absolute doof and instead of trying to catch the falling knife on the way down, we find that exact point. Now, whether it's going to turn the market or not, isn't what we're trying to find. What we're trying to find is a high probability opportunity, a high probability opportunity, which is what we're going to be talking about when we start talking about the cycle process. And we'll be able to look at this as a high probability trade and how this trade actually shows as a reality. Now, this is important because you've got to know it's real. How do we know it's real? Well, would a timestamp do for you? Would that be working for you if I showed you something that's time stamped? It's obviously up to date, you can see it's not lagging. So let's take a look at a time stamped opportunity. Now, the only ones, and we've warned everybody about this, the only one that's finished is the NASDAQ Market Maker Max Dispersion. It's one single max trigger. Let's take a look. You'll see here, we've got the max, forget the S and P ones, they are under, basically under advisement at this stage. So we're not really, we're not using the S and P ones, but they can help us out. They can help us with targets, they can help us with some trades. They are good, but they're not used at this point. The ones that are used, as we've explained to everybody, is the NQ Market Maker's Max Dispersion Trade. It tells you what it is, it tells you what you're looking for. And obviously, it tells you what you're supposed to do. In other words, this is telling us that we should be looking to sell the NASDAQ or indeed equities. It's not about the NASDAQ, it's about the NASDAQ, it's about the S and P, it's about the Dow Jones. We're selling equities at that point, 1430 cash market open. There's the cash market open into aggregate liquidity. Remember, this is what we're seeing, top line liquidity. So you draw a line against top lines, you find the sell and you execute. Well, that's the price you would have got, guys. You can't dismiss it because it's real, it's there, it's on your, it's on your, it's on your log. It's time stamped. That would have been your sell trade. 25s traded the bottom line price of 11s, that's you already banked somewhere in excess of $700 and you are 12 minutes into the day. Now, we always give a warning about the first cash open trade because it's obviously going to have a bit of gap attached to it. And we can obviously see that. So I wouldn't be counting that one as 100%, but at least you've seen it. At least it's there, at least it's time stamped. So what else can you now recognize from the NQ Market Maker's Max Dispersion Trade? So let's take a look and see what else we had. There's another one. 1453, NQ Market Maker Max Dispersion Offer, Top Line Liquidity, 1453. Where's 1453, guys? 1453, there's 1452, there's a 1453 candle right there. And obviously, we're selling into that candle, into that top edge. You can see the big aggregate volume, which is exactly what we're asking for, is liquidity, that big aggregate volume. There's your short sell into that candle, around about 30, trades a low price of 24s. That trade there was worth $300 in just four or five minutes. So you could have easily have picked up 100 bucks, stops at breakeven and sure, it's scratched out and you're ready to get the next opportunity. Let's see if we did get any more opportunities. You can see we're not cherry picking any one example. 1512, Max Dispersion Offer, Adding Top Line Liquidity at 1512. Sorry, guys, it's live, so it's jumping, of course, as new stuff comes through. Market Maker Max Dispersion Offer, Adding Top Line Liquidity Scalps at 1512. Can everybody agree that that's the 1512 top line right there? The 1511 candle finishes at 1512, it's into a top edge, we're going to be selling that liquidity. And what happened to that sell trade there at 32s, 33s? It dropped down to this price here at 24s and you made yourself approximately $450 in four or five more minutes. Well, in my world, that seems to be several, well, on a two lot, for example, that's you now sitting on well over $1,000 just on those two trades. Two trades. It's only 1517, the market's only been open for 45-odd minutes. You've done two trades off the top edge. Have we succeeded in safe selling a top line? At the moment, the answer is yes. At the moment, let's see what happens when the market bolts out of the stables on this measured move to the upside. Let's take a look at what happens. NASDAQ Dispersion Offer at 1533. Okay, sounds dangerous. So what happened to this dispersion offer at 1533? There it is, right there. You see how it goes into the top edge liquidity again, right there? You see the time, 1534, you see it, 1533, you see it? Top edge, same trade as the last time, same trade as the time before. Sell-side trade into that top edge gives me a sell trade about 42s, drops down to a low price this time of just 38s or approximately 38s. That's a $200 profit and a scratch trade ultimately was the outcome from that small but winning trade. So you've now faded the top edge three times and three times you've been able to see an instant sell-side response to those sell trade opportunities. Look how fast the three of those sell trades came off the top line. Pretty rapid. Now, they never reversed the market and we're not saying it's going to reverse the market, guys. We're saying the market maker is reaching a maximum pain level. And because the market maker is reaching a maximum pain level, there is an incredibly high probability that the market maker will rotate. Not my words, the words of all these papers, all these research papers that were done on the maximum pain process. Let's take a look at the next trade. The next trade, of course, is the one that everybody's looking at saying, wow, that was unbelievable. We top ticked the NASDAQ, didn't we? Or the S and P. So let's see what happens. S and P NASDAQ, 1607. NQ Market Maker's Max Dispersion Offer, Top Line Liquidity. Top Line Liquidity, 1607. Does everybody see where the 1607 candle is? There's a 1607 candle right there. Where are we going to, guys? Top Line Liquidity, it says in the text, adding top line liquidity to that scalp trade. So when you get the top line liquidity by simply drawing a straight line from the prior high, you've just found your entry fee. How much of a drawdown did we get on that trade? Almost nothing, right? It was almost a bid-offer spread on a sell at 48s. And the price duly obliged by dropping down to 26 for a $1,000 short sell. Did we know it was going to be $1,000? No. Was it $1,000? Sure. How much did that trade make on the NASDAQ? Quite a lot of monies. A fairly substantial A fairly substantial haul of cash. If we look at it on the NASDAQ, of course, which is, uh, which is something we can obviously do now that we've seen the time 1607. Let's take a look at the NASDAQ to compare whether the NASDAQ, whether we're only using the S and P because we're cherry picking. So 1607, there's the candle there, 1607 candle. The liquidity we're now looking at is that liquidity there, which is now the, the last liquidity and also that liquidity there. So we're looking to try and sell away from this area. So we're obviously looking at that. And obviously we could just call it as a sell when it breaks out from that area. Makes no difference. The sell trade approximately at 680. Trades a low price of 580. How much money? $2,000. So $1,000 on the S and P, equivalent of about $2,000 on the NASDAQ, which is pretty good. For a little rotation of a max pain level. So this is what we're starting to investigate is these max pain levels. You might be saying you've, you've missed out a lot of stuff here. Well, these were all S and P max trades, right? See all these lines? These were S and P max trades. That's why there's not any boxes around them. So obviously the idea is that you can, you can obviously look at these as possible profit takes or whatever. But we're highlighting the ones that we tell, told to the guys. This is the one that is absolutely 100% already completely finished. It is the key max pain trading that the market makers are going to do out of these price zones. So you can see there's an S and P max trade for a bid at 1618. You can see the bid at 1618 is right there. You can see where the liquidity was grabbed from. See it there? So there's the liquidity there. There's your S and P max rotation there. You can see it also made money. And obviously we can carry on going. So you see what I'm talking about. I'm only highlighting these key lines. The max bids here at 1627. Well, 1627 was this liquidity here. There's 1625, 26, 27. So you can see that by the time it breaks that liquidity there, it goes sell side. But as I said, these are not used as triggers unless they qualify with other things. These are still waiting to be fine tuned to become the maximum pain areas on the S and P, just like they are finely tuned for the NASDAQ trade areas. When we get down into the bottom edge, we start looking at these trades here. You can start recognizing as we come into the bottom edge, we start seeing a rejection. Well, that makes life a lot easier when we start seeing these bids coming in at 1647, for example, here. There's 1647 was that bid in there. So obviously we're looking for liquidity below that price, 1647. So you can see that the S and P isn't anywhere near as clear as the NASDAQ trade log is. And, and obviously the idea of that is simply because we haven't fine tuned it yet. We were getting the NASDAQ nailed properly. So we've been using the NASDAQ in the classroom a lot more than the S and P because we haven't spent the time yet getting the, the S and P right. Simply because it's a slower market. Once we've got the NASDAQ right, we can buy and sell in something as volatile as NASDAQ. And we are absolutely killing it. The next NASDAQ trade you'll see is coming up sometime soon. Okay, there we go. A sell, a sell at 1834. Let's take a look. 1834. Can everybody agree that there is the 1834 candle right there? So obviously the liquidity we're aiming for is this top edge. So you can see we get very, very, very close to that price. It doesn't quite get it. It's a little, literally one or two ticks away. If you jump the spread at 48s, you can see that the price then dropped down to a low price of 42 for another six points, another $300 profit on the dropout of that area. Now, we're not expecting you to top and bottom tick the exit. But you can see how accurate these triggers are in these little shaded box areas. And as we come into this trade here, which was the last one we looked at, let's take a look at that one. You'll see here NASDAQ Offer 1850. So let's take a look at that 1850 trade. There's the 1850 candle. Where is that liquidity? Well, it's going back for the liquidity that it just missed the last time. And that's the liquidity right there. Look at how accurate that sell is. If I sold that liquidity right there at 1854. Now, you might say, but would it not have scratched out for a zero plus one or whatever? Sure, by all means. You know, but it depends how you're going to manage it. It depends what the value is doing. It depends on a lot of other things happening at that exact point. Now, obviously, when you see what happened to that sell trade, you can actually recognize that it turned out to be quite a sizable sell. And if you decided to work the offers off that price, you can see we actually ended up into this bag of liquidity at the bottom edge here for a very, very nice, uh, big value profit on that swing low. And you can see just how good the trade was. And that's the trade log. And as I said, it's, it's bang up to date. I mean, it's, it scrolls in real time. It prints in real time. If you think I've cherry picked and we haven't had any more trades, there it is there. You can see it's scrolling in real time. It's the last trade here was 2033. And you can see 2028, there's no NASDAQ trades. There's 2021, the S and P, 2016, the S and P. There's 22, 2002, 1956 S and P trades. And obviously, when you're looking into this grab of liquidity at 2004, you can already recognize what was likely to happen. When we got that big bag of liquidity at the bottom edge here, because we got a 2002 signal suggesting that Max was going to bid the, the max pain level. If it broke into, remember liquidity pulls into aggregate volumes. Well, does everybody agree that that's liquidity into aggregate volumes? Well, that's what the bid is. 2004. Two minutes later, after the message comes out, that's where the bid was there. And obviously, if you'd been short from here, that would have been a great time to say, well, if Max got a maximum pain level there, I am going to use that as my booking price level. And from that booking price level, we've got that excellent little trade outcome. And you can see that the bounce, even if you did take the buy trades, actually pretty good. Max strong bids at 2016. So even at 2016 into the top edge here, you can see that we're still bidding this trade 2021. We're still bidding this trade at 2021. And you can see we then went up to the top edge here. So even, even at higher prices, the S and P is finding those buy trades. You see it? So the S and P was finding those buy trades into that tiny, tiny little pool of liquidity there. In other words, the market maker's max pain trade is still bid at that stage. Whether you like it, whether you don't like it, that's not the point I'm making. It's there for you to have a look at. So this is telling you what the market makers are up to. It's telling you where they're finding the maximum pain opportunities. As we go into the top edge, what happened to the top edge at 2028? Max strong offers at 2028s. Do you agree? 2028? What candle was this candle here? The 2028 candle, do you see it? 2028 candle right there. So when you see the 2028 candle there and you see it's into big liquidity at the top edge here. Well, that gives you an idea that they are probably going to sell that price right there. 2028, it's time stamped for you. I'm not saying it is a sell. This is not saying it's a sell. This is telling you the market maker has a maximum pain price just above that liquidity. That's what it's telling us. What you decide to do with it is entirely ultimately up to you. You can see that we got a maximum pain buy trade here at 2033 on the S and P. So what was the 2033 candle? There's 2030, there's 2031, there's 2012, 2032. So that's the 23, that's the 2033 candle. Yes or no? Is it into sell side liquidity? Is it into sell side liquidity at that price? Sure. So what do you think is going to happen when that trade shows up? It's highly likely that there's going to be a buy trade coming back off that trade, isn't it? Does it mean you're going to be buying it? Does it mean that there's going to be a trade for you in that trade area? No, it just means that the market maker is probably going to do a better rotation off of that price because of dispersion hedge activity. If you don't know what dispersion hedge activity is, it doesn't actually therefore make much of a difference because it just is simply the hedging that takes place between the indexes and the stocks. Okay, that's all it is. It's the hedging. If you, if, for example, if I'm long the stock, if anybody doesn't know, we'll quickly go through it very, very, very quickly. The volatility in the stock indexes are the stock themselves, stock futures, stock options. The indexes are a lot lower volatility than stock volatilities. And therefore there's a, there's a problem in terms of the distribution of those volatilities. What happens in terms of trying to keep the volatilities in a neutral phase is that there's a lot of hedging goes on. That hedging can be quite substantial. You can see that we've just had a max offer at the top edge at 2041. And obviously at 2041, you can take a look at that. Now, we're coming into the, we're coming into the, um. The market and close orders. So obviously at this stage, we normally close it down at this point because obviously that there's not hedging at this point. It's all directional bets in the marketplace as we reach the last sort of 20 minutes. So we hope to try and get through these before we hit the market and close orders. You're not going to take a dispersion trade into the closing bell necessarily because of course that's not what's driving the markets. It's the market and close orders that's driving the markets. But it's still there. It doesn't mean it's gone away. That offer at 2041 is still visible. It's still a thing. So obviously you can look at that trade in real time there. You can see the NASDAQ just traded that liquidity. What happened? What happened to the NASDAQ when it traded that liquidity? It's still sold, right? And I'm not saying that you would have taken it because this is not the right time of the day to be taking those types of trades at the very, very last dregs of humanity coming in. But you can still see that following that message, which was live, you've just seen it live. Following that message there, we get this dispersion hedge coming in for the mean reversal at that price. In other words, what's going to happen by the market makers is they've recognized this as a max pain level. And because they've recognized this as a max pain level on the dispersion side of their book. Dispersion is a huge part of market making. You won't hear that in any retail space ever, I wouldn't imagine. Perhaps I'm wrong, but you're not going to hear much about dispersion in retail spaces. Anyway, if you decided to sell that at 58s or 57s, it's just traded 48s. That's a $200 sell off. It's a $200 sell off on what we know as a Charlie D reversal candle. So we're starting to build a picture that this actually looked actually quite good, didn't it? Based on the buyers that are all trapped on that trade. And the fact that the market maker is probably going to cycle this price back down again during this little example. And the good thing about that was you saw it live on your screen at the time. So you know it's not cherry picking. You know it's not hindsight stuff. You know it's not lagging. It's real time stuff coming from the institutional world. Now, as I said, the S and P isn't finished yet. We're obviously in the process of getting it finished. So when we get into the process of getting it finished, we start thinking to ourselves about these cyclical phases. So when we see that trade coming off the S and P, there it is in the S and P itself. You can see it was running off that little top edge there. You can see that little cell coming off the 44s. And obviously that cell coming off the 44s there, giving you that cyclical rotation in terms of that process. And you can see that we've had that little bit of a profit from that 44 down to 42s. And that's obviously a quick 100 bucks paid into your account in two or three minutes. So Kevin's got a great question. What's this got to do with the max indicator? Well, that's because this is the max indicator. This is one of the max indicators, Kevin. So it is part of the max indicator itself. But this is the finished article. This is one of the finished articles. And this is part of the process that we're actually developing out as a series of different things. Now, obviously this is based on dispersion. It's very unique to the world of equities. So one of the things that we had to then try and develop beyond that was this idea of, well, what else do we now know about these rotations? One of the key ingredients of any type of rotation is of course recognizing that there is rotation taking place everywhere in the market space. There's a lot of reasons why the markets rotate. There's a lot of reasons why the markets don't rotate. And this is obviously also very, very important because if we can't figure out which one we're supposed to be taking, we could be ending up with a whole heap of mess. So one of the things that we've started to develop is we've started to develop out some other tools. Some other ideas, some other concepts, some other ways to see these rotations taking place where it's not necessarily a dispersion maximum pain type trade. Instead, it's actually a cyclical rotation. When we investigated things like Fourier transform, some of you may be aware of some of these phrases, but it doesn't make any difference. When we talk about some of these trades. When we go through the process of dispersion. When we go through the process of some of these cyclical trades. We obviously talk about things like the Fourier transform. Now, if you've ever tried to load a Fourier transform on your trading view, it's probably became very sticky and you might not have actually have achieved it. The Fourier transform is an incredibly meaty process, incredibly meaty process. If we know that the Fourier transform is an incredibly meaty process, what else is it part of? Well, obviously it's part cyclical. Why is the Fourier transform cyclical? Well, maybe you know, maybe you don't know, but we're certainly not going to spend a, a small period of time today trying to explain what the Fourier transform is. The point we're trying to make, I suppose, is that inside the world of trading, there are a lot of cyclical qualities about trades. When we look at a lot of cyclical qualities about trading, and this is still the NASDAQ here. One of the big questions is how, when does the market cycle? How does it cycle? What am I looking for when it cycles? How am I going to see it cycling? What am I going to do about it cycling? We know that in a trending phase like this, the market's not cycling, but yet it is cycling on a different timeframe. Well, that's what the Fourier transform can help us with. The Fourier transform looks at the bigger cycles, the smaller cycles. You may have put those types of cycles on your charts. You may have seen all of these wavy lines and sometimes they tie, they tie up and sometimes they don't. And obviously they repaint as soon as a brand new cycle prints. Now, if you've ever seen them, they look very seductive because you see all these cycles and it seems as if it always highlights the cycle low. That's because it always does highlight the cycle low because it repaints to the cycle low. Do you understand that? Has anybody seen what I'm talking about? These cycle trades. So if we see cycle trades and they always repaint, what value do they have on the right hand edge? What value do they have? None, absolutely none at all. So you may say, well, so what's the point? Well, the point is very simple because when we start predicting what those cycles are on the right hand edge, well, that's it. It's a prediction. It's not looking at the cycle. It's a prediction of what the cycle is likely to be. So what do we use for those types of predictions? Well, in terms of cyclical predictions, there's a lot of very, very good indicators like Hurst Cycles. We've got the, uh, we've got the, uh, Lors series of different types of cycles. Lors very, very prolific in terms of cyclical analysis. We've obviously got things like a stochastic as a cyclical indicator and an RSI as a cyclical indicator. So what makes it different? What makes ours different? It's that unique cyclical indicator. It's that unique narrative that comes from seeing cyclical indicators. One of the cyclical indicators that a lot of the guys do use, and I know that Reeve uses it quite extensively, is something like called the Z score. Now, you may say, what, why is the Z score a cyclical indicator? Because the Z score is simply just a probability distribution. And it's quite a good probability distribution. The Z score is a very useful probability distribution. And that's different from a frequency trade. One of the other probability distributions that we use in terms of the max is the Fisher transform. The Fisher transform is not a cyclical indicator in the true sense of word. In other words, it's not a frequency indicator. The max, the transform, the Fisher transform is actually a probability distribution cyclical indicator. And by all means, put the Fisher transform, put the Z scores on your charts. You'll see an awful lot of similarities in terms of these ideas. But does it generate trades? That's the big question because ultimately anything you put on your chart is just noise until it actually gives you clarity in terms of the information it provides. You understand that? So if I look at, for example, this little line here. There's obviously only one line. So if I put that line on the chart there, this is a buy trade. This is an actual signal for a possible buy trade opportunity. Yes, it's on the bounce off that price level, but what we should be doing when we see that is we should be drawing a line against that price. This is called the shakeout trade. If I draw a line against that price, this is now a valid tradable trade level. You can see that from that valid tradable trade level, you can see we had a pretty reasonable buy side response to that one single trade. This is in a one-minute chart on the NASDAQ today. You can see it for yourself. It's got a high volume reversal. And you can see that it's went from 580s to a high price eventually of 640s. It's 60 points. It's $1,200 on that maximum swing. As we get into that trade area, we can see obviously that there may have been an opportunity to go again into that trade here at 1742. And obviously you can see that that trade obviously ultimately developed into what turned out to be an incredible buy side swing. So whilst you might see cycles coming and going, cycles that were bullish and cycles that were bearish. There was only one cycle that qualified in terms of that setup. That cycle right there. So out of all those cycles, all of those free indicators that you can get on TradingView, and there's hundreds, I would imagine hundreds of thousands of them. What does it matter if you don't use them to make any money? What does it matter if it doesn't generate an actual trade opportunity? Well, that's the most important thing, isn't it? What we're doing here is we're now finding the trades that you can actually be using, not the trades that you Not the trades that you think about, not the trades that you think look good, but tradable opportunities, real tradable opportunities. Now, I'm not saying this is a buy trade and I'm not saying this is a buy trade or this one, or even this one is a buy trade, but it's a great starting point for a possible buy trade, isn't it? It's a great starting point to start looking at these as possible opportunities. When you look at these as trades, you can see that this just goes on and on and on. And this is all the way to the right hand edge and you can see that's the only trade that's found on that particular extreme setting. Now, you can obviously start inviting higher probability trades, but you're going to get less. Or you can invite lower probabilities and you're going to get more. But obviously as you start cranking out these incredibly high probability trades like this one, this is printed in real time. It doesn't lag. It doesn't repaint. It doesn't come back in a year's time to show you that there was a possible buyer there. It's in real time. It's, it's usually actually on a down candle. It's quite unusual that you get a buy trigger on an up candle. So I suppose that's even possibly more bullish at that stage. But you can see that there's not very many on that high setting. If we go through the process, you can see in fact, for the entire US session, there was no other trades, none. So when we start thinking about it, it doesn't mean it is a buy trade. It just means that there is an incredibly high probability cycle attached to that price. And that allows us to make this trade outcome, which ultimately went on for an enormous buy side profit. One of the main cyclical tools that we're going to be talking about ultimately is, is based around that Fisher transform. Now, why is the Fisher transform unique in amongst cyclical indicators? The Fisher transform is unique because it is not a frequency cycle. It's not based on the same concept as trying to find frequencies in the marketplace. It's based around the frequencies of the probabilities. And we all know what a normal Gaussian probability looks like. Everybody sees it on their market profile. Everybody sees it on their volume profile. We know how probabilities work. Well, that's what the Fisher allows us to see. So what have we done with the Fisher that starts to make some sort of sense? What have we done with that as a storyline that starts to show possible trades? Well, very simple trade entry processes. We start learning about some of the signals that we could have used. Inside of this high probability, of course, we can start looking at some of those rotations to see if any of these rotations hold any secrets, any possible plays, any possible trades. Let's take a look. And all of a sudden, we can see this process coming into this massive sell, buy side divergence here. This trade comes in from what we call a pin zone. So in the back of this trade, you can see that there are these green and red banded areas. One of the things that we did in the classroom was we started to talk about pin zones. We started to talk about pin zones because there's an awful lot of academic research done on pin zones. So the academic research on pin zones is very clear. It's very understandable. What is a pin zone? A pin zone is the probability that this price area may contain informed trading. What's one of the biggest characteristics of informed trading? One of the biggest characteristics of informed trading is a very sizable surge in volumes. We also know that the biggest characteristic of informed trading is the demand for liquidity because that's what institutions require. Big volumes, big liquidity. We did this actually based on a, you may not take my word for it, but would you take the Federal Reserve's word for it? We actually looked at one of the Federal Reserve New York staffers papers a few months ago. And the, the paper which we published in terms of the, the source and all that kind of stuff for people to look into themselves was by the New York, the New York Desk Fed. It was one of their staffers who was talking about the market makers, our rival rates of volume. Does anybody confirm that that's what we were looking at at the time? Can anybody verify that this was a real, actual paper by the Federal Reserve? So when we know it's a real paper by the Federal Reserve, then of course, does it matter? Well, it kind of matters. It's kind of important because these are real things that are being discussed by the biggest of the big institutions. It doesn't mean it still gives us a trade and that's the problem. Seeing these ideas isn't necessarily a trade opportunity. It's simply just another piece of information that we can either discard or move forward with. One of the things that we've started to then look at is this process of what we call the A10 entry process. The problem we've got with the A10 entry process is it's simply looking at the idea that there is going to be a possible fade coming into a market. Now, it's always better to wait for the A10 to finish and then look for a possible play as this turns around in terms of these cycles. Nobody knows where the cycle low is. Except of course, in most cases, the shakeout because that's where the shakeout came in. So the shakeouts telling us that they believe that this is now the market maker's maximum pain price. Without even knowing where the max pain price is, without even knowing anything about the dispersion of prices between the stock indexes and of course, the equity indexes, without knowing any of that stuff, this is an indicator that looks at the probability that this is highly likely the case at that price. When we see the price coming back off this, it's a key level for us to now pay attention to. As all pin zones are, and when we look at the pin zones, go back to the pin zones. One of the key concepts of the pin zone is we turn it into what we call the V pin zone. Now, what is the V pin zone? Well, the V pin zone is when we're in a pin zone and it brings in volume arrival rates from the Federal Reserve, for example. If the pin zone brings in volume, it becomes a V pin and V pins are significantly more important than simply pin zones. So when we look at things like volume and you start looking at these types of trades in these volume areas, you can see that this pin zone had a couple of big spikes in volume. But in this candle here, it's a very dangerous buy because of what reason? Well, everybody in the room knows, having used this for a while, that if the drive in terms of the probability is sell side and if the black line's dropping as a basic starting point, if the black line's dropping, the market has a high probability sell until it reaches an end when it turns. That end sometimes is predicted by the shakeout. So when we see that this black line is dropping here, the high probability is the price will keep dropping until it stops dropping basically. So the big challenge here is that we don't want to try and step in front of that. We want to try and actually intend to go with it. And so you could have used this as a possible buy side fade, but it wouldn't have been the right trade at that stage. We could have used this as a possible sell side reversal, which obviously is something we covered in today's classroom. Using that as a sell side reversal, we're now aiming to take out this prior swing liquidity here. And obviously based on the fact that the black line, this black line here is not divergent against anything else during that period. There's an incredibly high probability that we're going to be moving towards a possible shakeout narrative. And we give it space. And that's the most important component, isn't it? We give it space to show it. We then get the shakeout on this candle here, which we already know about without the indicator telling us. And based on that shakeout, you may well have, if you were a feeder, you would have used that fade there as a possible buy trade reversal. If you don't like buying falling knives, well, of course, now it just creates a level. Based on the fact that it's now created a level, we now have substantial divergence onto this level. The probability is now strong that we're going to go back towards a buy side pin zone. And then say the buy side pin zone, we're going to start looking for, for example, eight ends to start the next process. Well, what happens? We come into a buy side pin zone here. There's an A10 arrival. You can see the, the red paddle at the top edge. There's the A10 arrival at that stage. We're starting to watch that. And we can see that the volume actually came in just before the pin zone and then dropped out of that trade. Now, this is not going to be a high volume trade. Why? Because it's not into a brand new lower, brand new swing high for the day. If it's into a brand new swing low, it's always going to be a massive high volume. If this is effectively a pullback into a half back type trade area, then of course, it's not going to have the same volume surges that, for example, a bottom edge or a top edge is going to have. But we would now pay attention to this. Why would we now pay attention to this price level? Because it's a pin zone and because it's got an A10 up here, we now know that this is a possible max pain cycle price area. The same way as we know that this is a possible max price cycle area as well. We know it in hindsight, but that's okay because you still had a buy trade opportunity here. You still had a possible buy trade opportunity here as well. So when that price cycles back out, guess what? You had another opportunity to go again into this trade here. So where's the trade? Well, the trade of course is wherever you wish it to be. But the basic rule of thumb is you can either sell it in the way, sell it in the way up or buy it in the way down or wait for the reversal. For that purpose, we added the amplitude to the indicator. The amplitude shows whether we're starting to see that reversal divergence. So for example, if I was looking at this as an A10, you already be able to recognize that the amplitude is starting to drop off of that trade as that trade came into the top edge and rejected. So in other words, you could have sold that trade reversal right there. That could have been your opportunity to get into that short sell. As the price then tests into this prior swing high, you can see that there is a substantial divergence in terms of probabilities. This is not a frequency divergence. This is a probability frequency divergence. And therefore there's a very high probability that the market maker will try and cycle this price round. We've got a challenge to that because obviously we've got this parallel shift to the top side. And we know this because we've added the volume to this indicator, haven't we? The volume is the blue line. The blue line we've called the market maker. And the market maker is visible when we start seeing this idea of stickiness at the bottom edges of the top edges. When the black line is leading, and you can see the black line is leading here, here and here. When the black line is leading these narratives, it's very difficult to be trying to fade into these types of trades. When the black line is leading to the downside, it's very easy to be short. When the black line is now getting beaten up here by the blue line, this is a very easy buy press, you would imagine, in that area because it's at a higher price. It's holding that price area and you would imagine that this price is now going to retest for that divergence. So in other words, there's a story behind all of these elements. If we look at the divergence here, you can see that the, you can see that the amplitude changed direction there. The black line continued to press. The blue line is in charge of the bottom edge. And we have an opportunity to buy into that trade area just in there. And sure enough, buying into that little candle there and we result in a very, very nice trade back to the top edge cycle. And into the top edge cycle, there is no more divergence. So you've got to watch that trade and just use it as a booking process. If you just apply cyclical analysis to your charts, you're going to make none of these trade decisions. Because it's just a cycle. At the end of the day, it doesn't hold any real value. When you start understanding the value that it holds, which is why these classes are important, which why we believe these classes are important. We're not reinventing the wheel here. We're not claiming something that hasn't already been available. But what we're seeing is that there is a massive opportunity for you to properly understand how to use things like this. Once you know how to use things like this, you start seeing trades popping out of the charts. Look at how bullish, for example, this phase was here. Remember I said if the blue line detaches from the black line, there's a very good chance that the price will keep pressing higher. Well, the blue line badly detached from the black line, which means that the market will keep cycling. Why? Because the cycle for the market maker or the volume analysis is holding the price bid in those areas. And if the price is holding in bed in those areas, you start recognizing how easy it is to go for that buy side press. That's the breakthrough you start seeing with real trade opportunities. You can see into the A10 up the top edge, usually that's the end of the beginning or the beginning of the end. It's depending upon whether it's the first time you've seen it or the second time you've seen it. And obviously as soon as you see that, you start thinking to yourself, that's possibly it right there. Any retest could be divergent and may be a sellable opportunity. And obviously you can see here that when we got a second one here, you can see we kind of tried to retest here. And then we went to a very simple drive to the downside. And if you like it, you could have obviously grabbed a little bit of short selling opportunity into that phase there. Again, it's the interpretation that catches your attention. It's the idea that these are ways to start looking at some of these tools that when it starts popping, it really pops. It almost gives you every trade that you could ever want on a single chart at this stage. You look at the prior swing high and you can see we got a couple of eight ends into the top edge up here. You can see that we're starting to see the amplitude coming out. You can see the big volume arrivals into those prices. And you start waiting for the black line to turn down. The black line turns down and you start considering this as a possible top edge. As we come up into that possible top edge up there, there was no divergence here. You can see it's just about fair value. And then unfortunately, what happened to the blue line? It became bullish. And as the blue line became bullish at that stage, the problem we've now got is it's probably going to run that top edge until it flips. There it's flipped. See it? In a pin zone, the blue line has now flipped. In a pin zone, if the blue line's now flipped, this is a very, very, very unusual powerful sell side signal. The guys that have used this will know this for themselves. If you can get a flip in terms of a blue pin zone or a, sorry, a green pin zone or a red pin zone and the market maker is dominating and there's obviously a sizable value divergence, which suggests it's definitely going to be falling, then you can see that there is a great opportunity to start stepping into those types of trade areas with confidence. If you look at the bottom edge here, you can see that the black line dominates the drive higher. This is not in a pin zone. This is not in a pin zone here. This is in a pin zone here. That turns out to be the top tick price. When we look at the bottom edge here, you can see we enter the pin zone with the blue line below the black line. So with the blue line below the black line, you're now thinking to yourself, the market maker, according to the volume analysis, the market maker is in charge of that bottom edge just there. As we now recognize the blue line is below the black line, when it does scale properly, it doesn't just readjust in the scaling. With the blue line below the black line in a pin zone, you're now looking for that as a possible liquidity sweep for the market to go bid. As the price goes bid, there's a nice opportunity for me to go long into that trade there. And obviously the takeaway from that in its own right was worth thousands of dollars per contract. That was a $2,000 buy side rally off of that tiny, tiny little trigger right there, $2,000 rally. You can't disagree with it because you can look all your, all you like for yourself and you can see that if the price is in that location at that particular point, that there is a possible play. I'm not saying it's going to be a buy trade because we still need to confirm it with relative value. We still do our same due diligence in terms of why are they buying it in the first place? But we can now look at that and say, I am seeing what I need to see to be a little bit more active in terms of that maximum pain reversal. It's a probability distribution. As we develop out this process, it won't just be a probability distribution. It'll be a frequency distribution as well, which is the next phase, which we may finish this thirsty. We may finish it in thirsty. And the frequency distribution is taking the next step with the Fourier transform, an indicator that doesn't load very well inside of TradingView because it's too strong. It's too big an indicator. It's too heavy a code. And because of that, we've always failed to really get it to work for us in terms of other parts of the indicator. So we've hopefully created a solution to that and we'll be able to get the Fourier transform working instead of Trader View, yeah, Trading View properly. So we can start recognizing some of these real money clues. That pin zone there blew clearly above black in a pin zone for a big short sell. That short sell went from 690 to 580 for over $2,000. This blue buy trade into the pin zone here, well below the bottom edge, running the bottom edge. Now, I know it's flipped before the bottom edge, but when it rejected, buying into the five, the four sixties, we're running all the way up to the six fifties is an enormous trade of about $4,000 per contract. Four grand per contract on that buy trade, potentially maximum swing trade outcomes. So there are unique elements to this, isn't there? Nobody's claiming that we've reinvented the wheel. What we are suggesting is we're now starting to see real money opportunities from that wheel. It's already inventing a wheel, but if it just spins round and it rolls down hills, you've not really invented feck all, have you? Except for perhaps a bit of fun and games for the kids. If you then attach the wheel to a car chassis, suddenly you can go places using the wheel. Suddenly you can go places using this probability distribution storyline. Suddenly the max process, the max pain process isn't just a possibility for making money. You've already seen all of those NASDAQ trades unless you deny the timing of those NASDAQ trades. You can already recognize those NASDAQ trades isolated amongst every other trade. Had a hundred percent win rate today with a couple hitting big home runs for a thousand dollar plus change. And that's on the S and P, never mind the NASDAQ. The big sell on the NASDAQ was worth The big sell on the NASDAQ was worth $2,000 maximum swing. How you manage those positions, of course, isn't what we're discussing here. The management of those positions needs to still be addressed as a separate subject. But what we are is starting to bring the possibility of execution to the world of trading indicators, which is something that a lot of people try and a lot of people fail. Some people in the room are using these as executable trade strategies and doing very well indeed with them. Some people haven't yet got there. It's a process like every other process, it's all about your application, it's all about the way you apply some of these tools. To recognise how they build, to recognise how these trades play out. I wanted to just touch on, for example, cable. You might be saying cable, why are we going to be looking at the pound marketplace? What has that got to do with the cost of anything? Well, interestingly enough, when we start looking at some of these other markets, it becomes apparent that when we're looking at, for example, any of the Forex markets, that we see certain things happening. And certain things that happen obviously become possible trade outcomes as well. So if we look at, for example, our storyline on cable, these are all parts of that max pain process. Take a look at this cable chart here from the pound dollar from going back to this trade here. This was on the 15th of August. This was all real time. This year was all real time, these levels, these numbers are all real time. We've went from a buy trade at 28 evens and we're now trading the cable market at 3250s. So if you like long-term swing trading on Forex, or even short-term swing trading on Forex, as a contradiction. Well, that trade there was worth 450 pips over the course of that period. This is not hindsight, this was tweeted out in advance in terms of understanding the process. This is part of that max pain process. There's no one thing, a lot of people think max is that indicator I've just shown you, that's not max. What max is, is the ability to recognise that there is a tradable opportunity at a certain price. Max is about finding that opportunity inside of these processes. Max is not about this line, that is not max. Max is a whole raft of ideas trying to find those high probability executions. Where before it was just a line on a chart telling you something, but it wasn't really clear what it was telling you. Now what we're trying to do with the max process is make it clear so that it tells you a trade outcome. Let's take a look at one of the other things we've got in here. You might be saying, what the hell is even this nonsense? Well, this is the max market maker window. This is based on a, this is based on a very, very simple process. It's based on high volume arrivals at certain prices in certain areas. It's simply a red for sell, buy, a green for buy, it's not a trade that you simply just jump on board. But it is something that again, you start thinking about. Not all trades reverse the market and again, sitting inside of a relative value narrative. We can obviously look at this and try and figure out whether there's any value to any of these trade signals. When we see there's a big red signal in here, at a top edge into the swing high, it's a very, very high probability when we get two out of three that there's a going to be a sell coming in, it's pretty obvious. Two out of three, you can see it came in on the first candle and it came in on the second candle. Does it give me an executable on its own right? No, but it tells me that I'm starting to look for that executable. Look into the bottom edge here where we started to see this trade here. Two out of three on the big down candle with a big volume, yeah, there was two out of three on that candle as well. But obviously when you start tying these signals into some of these trade signals here as well. So when you see the market maker dominating through the probability distribution of the Fisher. And we start seeing that these market maker signals and we get two out of three right there, do you see the two out of three? That's a one out of three there, that's a one out of three, that's a one out of three, that's a two out of three right there. Well, that's an executable. With the blue line significantly above the black line, that is an executable. What can you do? You could put a sell order, you could start working a sell order right there on that candle. And obviously if you worked it right there on that candle, your drawdown on that trade was pretty minimal. And obviously the sell-off coming in in that phase is pretty good. As we come into this tradable area here, you can see we start seeing two out of three with the shakeout coming in there on an A ten trade. Two out of three with an A ten with a shakeout, yeah, absolutely. This is going to be a buy reversal and it's going to be a tough buy reversal, but it is a buy reversal. We start seeing that buy coming back into that narrative. Now, one of the biggest problems we've got is, you probably know yourself, is that I hate indicators. I detest indicators. I'm far more at home seeing bids and offers running through a time and sales than I am trying to find an indicator trade entry. I am not a mad fan of indicators. And the reason why I'm not a big fan of indicators is very simple, because most of them are crap. They just show you what, I'm not saying the indicator's crap, but in terms of the way people try to use the indicator, it's usually kind of rubbish. An indicator at the end of the day is just a series of code, a series of numbers. Developing and delivering an idea or a solution to a question that maybe you have. But for the vast majority of retail traders, it's delivering a solution that you never thought you had. You never thought you had a problem in the first place. When we start thinking about indicators simply as delivering a result that you're asking it to deliver, the indicator is never wrong. An indicator can't be wrong. Indicators are not fortune tellers, do you understand that? Indicators are not there to tell you the future, indicators are there to tell you the state of the present. And from that state in the present moment, you start to recognise that there may be an opportunity in the future with a higher probability distribution. So based on that as a process, we start recognising that this is all it can ever be. This is why the Fisher, this is why the horse, this is why the Hilbert sine wave, this is why the cyclical type processes allow us to start recognising the timeframe of reference. If you understand the Fourier transform, the Fourier transform is very simple. It highlights what cycle is the dominant cycle. So for example, if I'm looking at the pound drive higher, we know what the cycle is, it's a very bullish cycle. If I look at this chart here, if I get rid of some of these indicators, just so that we don't have any noise on the chart. And I take it up to a 30-minute chart, we can see what's driving, which cycle is driving the market, can't we? On a higher timeframe. We can see on a higher timeframe, we can see the cycles. We can see that on a lower timeframe, this just looks like a lot of noise. Let's take a look at that in a little bit more detail. One of the other indicators we've brought out is very simply the spring trade. It's nothing special, it's just a spring trade, that's all it is. If I look at the spring trade in this chart, you'll start recognising that the spring trade is all about market structure. You'll see, for example, the spring trade highlights all of these pullback buy trades in a buy structure. Very simple stuff, very simple trade ideas, spring trades for buy, spring trades for buy, spring trades for buy, spring trades for buys. So you can actually see that the spring trade structure broke at that stage there and went bullish. Well, if you know that that's the case, you can already recognise that by the time the first spring trade traded there, it was at 18,560. Well, it traded 20,000 over the course of the next few weeks. That's a 1,500 point move or $30,000 per contract over that period. It's quite a substantial buy-side pop off of that spring trade, isn't it? Quite a substantial buy-side pop from those springs. You can see in the early stages, of course, we had this series of red springs. So if we look backwards, we can see red spring after red spring. And when did the red springs kick in? The red springs kicked in right here. So we can recognise that there was a change of structure and we're now trying to be spring selling this. Never changed to a buy spring until here. Knowing that we're in this phase of a market allows us to start considering the possibility of top edge selling opportunities. If we are sell-side the spring, then of course, any type of reversal trade into those spring trade areas becomes a real money opportunity. Staying on the short side of the probability spectrum allows us to be more focused in terms of some of these longer-term trade swings. If we're trying to do that and we go along to this period, we can see we're always in buy swings during this period. And therefore simply by recognising the concept of buy swings, I can then look for these buy swings on the max process. In other words, I can start looking at some of these rotations inside of this max spectrometer. Why did we call it spectrometer? Because it's just a breakdown of the various waves of probability, not frequency. If I look at the max spectrometer, we can see some incredible trade areas. We know we're only looking for potentially for buy trades. So if I'm looking for buy trades, the trade areas I'm really looking for are the what? The red zones, right? So if I'm looking only for the red zones, I could actually just go back to my max shakeout. And I could look only for red zones and I can reduce the threshold in this narrative. So I can drop the threshold down to say two, and I can look only for red zones. So when I see, sorry, but in this case it's reversed for buy, so the buy zones with volume, do you see the buy zones with volume? There it is right there. So when the buy, the buy-side springs are playing, there's my macro buy trade there. And when the buy-side swings are playing, there's my macro buy trades in there. How do those buy trades pay out? How did the buy trades pay out during that spring trade process? There was a spring trade here, there was no macro buy there, it's 10:30 in the morning. There was a bit of volume in this one, so you could have been long into that bit of volume right there, couldn't you? I mean, even if you did buy here, it's still a pretty good response. So again, you can see that even in the long term, this is a half-hour chart. You can see that buying there and exiting into that massive exit volume, you could have been looking at a trade that went from 570 to a high price there of 880. That trade there is worth 300 points, 300 points in terms of the NASDAQ is a $6,000 profit on that trade. Now this one, a little bit stickier, but you can see that if you bought into this low price, it did manage to at least rotate into these pin zones. And you might have been able to use the eight ends as a nice easy exit for a small amount of profit. The last trade was a buy trade right here, you can see it for yourself, it was today's cash open. You can see it's a buy trade, you can see it's blue in the background, massive volume. And obviously buying into that trade at 480 means that you made about $4,000 today in terms of that massive swing trade from that price forward. These are all on the charts, they're all visible, you can see them for yourself. If we go back even further, when the springs were buy-side, you can see we had another spring trade here potentially. And obviously that's again coming into those pin zones, a massive arrival of volume in a pin zone. Well, that was at a price of 19,550. It traded 19,900 following that pin zone reversal. Massive profits of around about $8,000 per contract on the swing. And the last big, big volume trade was this A ten buy trade in here. And obviously that's where the buy trade really kicked off big style. You can see the buy trade in there and obviously the takeaway from that trade was enormous, absolutely enormous. 480 to 920 by the time we started to reach up into those A ten top lines. Now, whether you use this for swing trading or not, is obviously a different type of, a type of a process. It's not necessarily based around the spring trade process. It's based around simply trying to find areas where maximum pain is likely. Envol, the concept of this arrival with big volume coming in, Envol is just the volume indicator highlights, helps to highlight some of these big arrivals. The papers that we've read from the Federal Reserve tells us about these big arrivals. These big arrivals are incredibly important to us. With a big arrival, which is incredibly important, you're welcome to try and find these trades and do them, of course. We call these key nine trades, these key nine trades, of course, are simply big, big dog volume, hence the reason why they were called key nines. And but big dog volumes is something that we pay attention to as whatever trade style we're using. The arrival of volume in areas where we expect market makers to try and cycle price is really important. We did this exercise actually in classroom and we've done it a lot in the classroom over the last 10 years. We've asked people to take part in these market maker games with us and we've asked them to try and understand the process that allow market makers to buy on downticks and sell on upticks. And I don't think we've ever finished any of those market games where we've actually ended up losing money. And that's usually because it's during the lunchtime session in New York when we do the classroom. The market's more likely to cycle during those periods and the market maker's more likely to make money. But if you understand that, it's massive. Does max work with spot Forex? Well, it, it works in terms of cyclical narratives, absolutely, absolutely. But obviously the, the idea of the volume narrative is going to be different. Um, and obviously you've also got access to the 6E contracts, the 6B contracts, et cetera, as well, in terms of the futures, where you get the different types of order flow and different types of volume that you can also use in terms of your Forex. But one of the key takeaways, guys, is very simple. What are you going to do without it? Well, you could obviously put on a lot of indicators, a lot of indicators that kind of do a lot of the same things. None of these indicators are unique. What is unique is this process of finding trade opportunities from these indicators. What's unique is what we're trying to deliver in terms of executables. Everything we're doing with the max process is about trying to find an executable from a trade setup with an incredible accuracy. We've already seen that from some of the trades that we've highlighted on the NASDAQ this afternoon or the S and P this afternoon. We've already recognised some of those big high probability trade outcomes. Now, in terms of the high probability trade outcomes, these trades sit inside of a relative value framework. Inside of a relative value framework, it's almost impossible to recognise anything but incredible trade opportunities. If I just look at simply a rotation of fair value narratives, you can see that when we got that max sell trade at the top edge, there was a big pop in terms of the rotational business here, the purple line. When the rotation comes out of the trade, you can see that this opens the door to a very high probability sell trade on the retest. In other words, relative value is never far away. It's still very much part of our process in terms of trying to find the right trade at the right price. What max does is max delivers an opportunity to find those trades that little bit cleaner. The timing of those trades becomes paramount importance to us. When I look at the timing of those trades and I'm thinking about that pop in terms of buy-side value, I'm reminded that there's going to be something in terms of a probability distribution at that price. When I look at the probability distribution at that price, you can see that there is a significant divergence in terms of that probability, do you see it? So in terms of this trade, there's not a significant divergence. In terms of the value, there's not a significant divergence. So I'm not going to be selling on that rally through that price, whether we see a max dispersion or not, it's not going to make any difference. What I'm now looking for is this diverging storyline coming in here. I'm looking for the blue line preferably to be bullish. I want to see that blue line above the black line preferably. Why? Because that means the volume is getting jammed. There's a, there's a discrepancy between price and volume. And then we all know if there's a discrepancy between price and volume, that the person that's causing that discrepancy in most cases is either the commercial or the market maker. So we call this the market maker line, not because it is the market maker, because it helps to help people understand the process. Selling into the top edge here, selling into the top edge here, or selling into the top edge here is now in line with our relative value and in line with the spectrometer process here. It's a probability distribution and it works. That's the most important thing, it works. So when we see it coming in, this doesn't repaint, none of this repaints. It just shows you what you're wanting to see. And what you're wanting to see is you're wanting to see a probability distribution that's painting on the right-hand edge. This is the problem that Stade O'Meyer identified. Stade O'Meyer identified by using market profile, which is a probability distribution, it's based on the Gaussian framework, as you probably know, of normal distribution business. Where we see this very, very low volume, top edge and the very low volume bottom edge and the POC in the middle, that is that normal distribution. They call it a normal day, that type of thing there. What this is, is effectively a probability distribution that is now forecast into the future based on the present moment, in other words, based on some of the elements of price and probability. So when I see a trade that's setting up as clean as this divergence here, there is an incredible probability with value dropping, with this dropping, with the blue being over the black line here, making lower lows. There's an incredible probability that if I sell that price and I make that my benchmark trade, there's an incredible probability that I'm going to make money on that deal. When we look at the money on that deal, the key to this is that we get the sell coming in. And obviously what happened, we went from 5649s to a low price on that swing there of 5643, it's six points, it's $300. But it's the key principle of it, isn't it? Look at this trade here, for example. Does anybody see a possible buy trade in here? Well, the Well, the black line's gone up, you can see the blue line's gone down, the value's going up. And we can see the price is now tapping into a little bit of liquidity there. And this we would be looking at saying, well, if this going, going to go anywhere, the probability suggests that this is going to be a buy opportunity just there. The probability suggests that this is a buy, it doesn't mean it's a certainty, it doesn't mean it's an arbitrage. It just means that there is a probability, why? Because the volume is trapped under the line. The volume is trapped under the line. And if the volume's trapped under the line, it's effectively traded like volume delta Daniel, absolutely. It's looking at that concept of voluming trapped under the line for a buy trade reversal. And if the volume's trapped under a line for that buy trade reversal, there's a very high probability that the market maker needs to ultimately flush the volume towards the top edge. It's a frequency, but it's based on the probability distribution. We know that probability distributions are based on frequency. That's what ultimately it is. As we bring people in to do a probability distribution of people's heights, there's a frequency to people turning up, there's a natural ebb and flow of frequency. As we go through more and more people, the frequency always, obviously averages out, that's the point. But it's still a frequency. It doesn't trend, it's not a trending indicator. In fact, we can show you that very clearly, we'll get rid of value, we'll get rid of all of these elements. And we'll simply get rid of price as well. And when we hide the price and we look at it, you can see quite clearly, it is not a trending indicator. It looks awfully like a stochastic or an RSI or a, or a Z score or any other type of cyclical piece of information. So this is one of the drawbacks of any type of cyclical information is it doesn't contain trending data. But if I apply, for example, a value narrative, which is what we're going to just do, there's a value narrative. If I look at this value narrative and I can see, for example, today, that that value narrative is quite clearly bullish, which you might agree with, yeah? If I look at that value narrative and we can see quite clearly that the value is bullish today, well, what ones am I looking for? Which ones are more important to me, the downside cycles, right? The downside divergences, the eight end buy. Now, there's not going to be many because of how bullish the market is today. But you start recognizing some of these eight end down trades with divergences. We want to be working on those buy trades in line with that underlying value structure in the background. As we see the value structure changing over, this is quite exciting, isn't it? Because at the top of the value structure here, you can see value tops out here at seven o'clock, starts to drop. Well, the cyclical structure changed a long time before that, didn't it? We got lower lows, lower highs, lower lows, market makers dominated the sell side of the business in there, do you see it? Market makers dominating the sell side way before the value dropped out there. And obviously ultimately way before equities actually even dropped off the top edge. You don't get that from simply putting an indicator on your charts and hoping that you can see these trade outcomes for yourself. That's what we're trying to get to you guys for. The ability to see these things is not based on the line itself. The ability to see these things is based simply on the fact of understanding this concept and being able to recognize the value of seeing, for example, that little divergence in there, see that divergence there for that top edge? Is that not crazy now that you know a little bit about it? It's crazy how good that trade is when you look at it. Well, that divergence in there is almost the same as this top edge up here. When the value is now going upward, you can start recognizing the ability to then recognize this storyline and say, well, it's almost exactly the same price as what happened before, is that surprising? Not really. It's part and parcel of a cyclical market, isn't it? The market cycles offer, the market cycles bid, the market cycles offer. And what we're trying to do is capture the highest probability parts of that cycle. And that's what we're trying to do in everything. Not just capture it in terms of, there's an indicator that shows that there might be a capture. But pop it into a time format, like the trade log, for example, where you actually see the cycle being captured in terms of a trade entry with a timestamp attached to it, so you can check it for yourself. Now, this is an early part of the process, we're still working on it. We have a few new wrinkles to come, especially in terms of the predictability of these top edges and bottom edges. And as I said, we might be able to finish that by Thursday, but we're obviously putting it out there to start showing you guys what we're working on just now. I don't like indicators. I don't like this as a process. I don't like this as a narrative, because I feel that indicators end up taking off the personal responsibility for doing trades. As soon as a trade goes wrong, everybody will blame an indicator. No, the indicator just provides you with an answer to a question that you're asking. It doesn't do any more, it doesn't predict the future. So when we look at the indicator process and we start looking at the future, we start recognizing the selling processes that are coming in here. We start recognizing that in terms of the probability distributions, there is a very high probability short sell coming in to that top edge price. So when I start seeing an arrival rate coming in and an arrival rate could be an increase in volume in that narrative, there's an increase in volume there for a sell, I start selling it. So there's an increase in volume there, I start selling it. So obviously that allows me to start using that information to say, well, I'm going to get short there. There's an increase in volume there, well, I'm going to start selling it. I'm going to sell it into increased arrival rates, assuming my underlying assumption is correct about the shape of this market going forward. The value is bearish, the cycle probability is bearish, the market maker volume seems trapped at the top edge, the C D V narrative. And obviously as we cycle into the top edge here, we cycle into the top edge here, we are now hammering these arrival rate volumes. You could argue that when we started to see this dropping here, there was an arrival rate just there, a slight surge in red volume. That's an arrival rate. Slight surge in red volume there gives me an idea that there's a possible buy trade there. The takeaway from that buy trade with a little bit of drawdown in the scandal, pretty good back towards top edge prices. None of these is going to be a buy trade or a sell trade, none of them. What it is going to do is a probability distribution. What it then develops into is things like the Max trade log, for example, to find those NASDAQ trades. What it then develops into is the high probability trade outcomes when we start seeing these crossovers between arrival rates, top edge tests and so on. What we set out to do here is simply be able to provide execution. Not to reinvent the wheel, not to try and do something that hasn't been done before. We are obviously limited by the processing power that Trading View provides. Not by what you can provide or what we can provide, but what Trading View provides. You will know that this, this process is held by Trading View. And therefore if they can't process it within a certain time limit, you might not know this, but some indicators have a time bar, they cannot process in time. When we started this process out many years ago, in fact, we had some great plans for Trading View. They all fell to pieces when we realized that Trading View could not process institutional quality indicators. They couldn't process them. The Trading View process, the Trading View computers are not powerful enough. And probably rightly so, if everybody's tapping into their computers, trying to draw their indicators, then of course there's going to be a major problem, there's going to be a major meltdown inside the world of Trading View. So it caused us basically to go back to scratch. The indicators that we had originally intended to were very, very, very institutional in their nature, very detailed. We tried to load them in Trading View and they timed out, almost the very first time we tried it, they timed out. They timed out, they timed out some more, some of the guys that have been involved in programming will be able to confirm that that is indeed an actual process. So we had to strip out all the good stuff, because all the good stuff was in the detail. And we were left with pretty much rubbish. And obviously from that rubbish, we've been trying to rebuild good stuff again. That's not easy, as anybody that's ever tried to build an indicator will tell you, it's not an easy process. We've obviously also got the core, the correlations narrative, it's just simply the correlations, looking at various relationships between two lines. That's something that you can add into the Max process as well. It's looking at, for example, the value difference between the components and the price, for example. It looks at those as, 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 as divergences, as correlation components go. It's a simple process and it allows you to see perhaps at a glance, an opportunity to trade value on top of the market maker complex as well. When we see it, the market is made up of all of these things, not one of them. Every single piece of this moving jigsaw puzzle. If we like what we're seeing, if we like the process, then of course what we're trying to do now is just mimic this process every day. We're trying to find these great trade opportunities. You can even see on the right hand side, what would you naturally be trying to trade on the right hand side? Well, you can see that we pinned the top edge here. The blue line is significantly advanced against the black line, which means the buy volume is trapped, according to what we're seeing. The probability is bearish. And what we should be able to do is be able to sell short off of the top edges. That's what that tells me. If you just put an indicator on the charts, you might not know that. But if you simply then look at this from our point of view, this is a very bearish sell side divergence. This is a very bearish narrative, so selling into that prior swing high here or indeed this little prior swing high here, or indeed this next prior swing high here, or any of these swing highs gives you an opportunity to trade probability distributions. This is a moving market profile. Selling into this at 45s, it's just traded 43s, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's still worth another hundred bucks to you if you decided to play that this evening. The bottom edge here dominated by the blue line on the way down into a level two liquidity at the bottom edge here, allowing us to think about the possibility, probability knee, that there is going to be a buy trade coming in at that point. Again, if we look at the diverging storylines between these lines, you'll see the black line was diverging strongly when we tested into that price level. The blue line is dominating the bottom edge of our markets. This is a very doable buy proposition now, this is into the market and close orders at that stage. It makes not a jot of difference, it's still a very, very interesting trade idea right there. Do we have to wait for the price to turn? It's always better if it does, but you're obviously also going to give away some of your price edge. So you can see when the, you can see when the, the amplitude starts to rise, that's going to slow the black line down ultimately. And you can see obviously if we were able to wait for that there, you would have had to have crossed the spreads to try and capture that last little grab of cash before the cash market closes just there. It's not perfect, you know, but it's getting close to being very good. As I mentioned, some of the guys are using it very, very extensively, some people not using it at all. Sometimes we show it in the room when we're looking at certain aspects and sometimes we're back on our normal narrative in terms of relative value. The point is, it's part of a process, not the entire process. It's a part of a process which is a little bit more unique, a little bit more systematic, if you like. It generates some trade ideas called inside the trade log. At the moment, the Max N Q and the Max Bond at the moment are in the trade log. We've never seen any bond trades today, actually interesting enough from it. But you can see that this as a process is a real thing. These trade ideas inside of this process simply gives us probabilities. That's all, nothing more, nothing less, it's a probability distribution. So when I start rating my trades as a probability, there's very little else that does that for you. There's very few clues about probability distributions, there's very few clues about the way that price behaves when probability works for us. If you started out tonight wondering about probabilities, about stacking the odds in your favor, this is one of the ways we do it. Being able to stack the odds in your favor means putting this black line, blue line, green and red line, I always just change it back to red. But the idea of stacking this in our favor, simply putting it on the charts and letting it show me what I'm looking to try and find inside of a relative value framework, inside of a, inside of a market delta framework, inside of a, inside of an order flow framework of any sort, the book liquidity framework, it is quite clearly the obvious outcome. You can see that that sell trade has worked out beautifully, the drop in the sell price in real time on the right hand edge. You might be saying, but is this not a buy trade? No, it's not a buy trade. This is, this has made a lower low from the background here. And because it's made a lower low, you're obviously starting to be aware that that is a lower low. At this point, I don't know if this is going to make a lower low or not. I have no way of knowing. So at this point here, it's the sell trade as it's came in and you can see what's happened to the trade. It's absolutely splashed down to the bottom edge in real time. Now, whether you think that was pure chance or not, that's up to you. Makes no difference to me whether it was or not, but you can see that you don't have to rely on these types of top edge sells. You could have sold, of course, here. Both lines are dropping, probability is bearish, both lines are dropping. And if both lines are dropping and probability is bearish, this is a very high probability short sell here. A very high probability short sell here. These are high probability short sells. And if we were able to take those in terms of the momentum shift, whether you like selling top edges or buying bottom edges, makes no difference at all. They are momentum shift trades and obviously the momentum shift trade here makes a lot of money. This is what we've got so far. This is only the beginning of the process, this is not the end, this is not where we're going to end up with. What we will end up is ultimately a suite of executables. A suite of executables where you will be given more precise, every week we pass, we will have more precise signals, you'll see those S and P trades becoming a lot more precise in line with the types of trades we had on the NASDAQ, the S and P will become more accurate, more precise. But I like having that lack of precision on some of the trades, because it gives us a lot of entries and a lot of exits, a lot of profit takes. I like having that option to see those types of ideas. Still a probability, still not necessarily high enough probability to lean on, but it is a probability distribution that we can look at as it develops. No signal is going to be in isolation to everything else in the marketplace. A dispersion sell isn't always going to be a short sell in the world of trading. The hedgers that sell it might be trading against risk premium buyers. The hedgers that sell their risk premium might be trading in front of a massive collapse in equities. Well, that means that they're not going to be able to withstand that massive collapse in equities. So in other words, we have to recognize that at the end of the day, it's still part of a bigger process. But it is a new part of the process that we've been using. People have always wanted to see indicators, they're always excited about indicators. And what we've put together is a series of things that start to build probability edges, that's it. Nothing more, nothing less. If you want to start building those probability edges, then of course, that's what we're doing in classroom just now. We're seeing a lot of advancement by some traders that are starting to build those probability edges. And is it not better to trade knowing the probability is slightly, at least even slightly in your favor, than slightly against you? I'm sure it probably is. When we see a, a buy trade here, what's to stop that becoming a top edge? Well, this is to stop it becoming a top edge. So the idea that the probability distribution here and that blue candle there is favoring a sell trade is in its own right a massive expansion of your knowledge. The idea that when we see any of those trade signals, when we see that, that blue candle there with this big divergence, what's to say that that's not going to explode through the top edge and keep on going to the moon? Nothing, except this has a probability distribution suggesting that that is unusual and it is probably more likely to be a sell than a buy trade. If I can start using those probability distributions to recognize the probability is with me rather than against me. If that's not a good thing in trading, I really don't know what is. You might not agree, you might disagree entirely, the probability distributions are a thing that are important. But when we look at it, we simply have to recognize that this is just part of the jigsaw puzzle. The probability distribution for that being a buy trade and the probability distribution for that being a sell trade seems to be very, very clear. And was it correct this evening? Was this a buy trade? And was this a sell trade? Sure, you don't have to take my word for it, you can see what happened next. Probability distributions in line with the story, in line with everything else, in line with value becomes a real positive experience. If I'm going with value, you can see the value is exploding north, the probability is exploding north. The value and probability agree, I am going to take a buy trade for a press. The probability is sell side, the value is sell side, my probability has just exploded. But if I sell that top edge, I have got to have a high probability short sell. And sure enough, the short sell works. And sure enough, the short sell worked as well. That's all we can ever do, guys, is build probabilities, nothing more, nothing less. I think I've kept enough of your time tonight, so I think we'll finish off at that for the moment. And, uh, you know, if you decide that you're interested in coming back in and having a look, I'm sure you'd be more than welcome. If you decide not to, then have a look at probability, probability theories, probability distributions, guys. It's an incredibly important part of a market maker's model. These ideas of trying to find high probability sells even at lower prices result in trades like this because of what reason? Because the delta is getting trapped. It's still there. These obvious clues don't go away because you've got an indicator. They complement each other. They don't just become a replacement for everything else. But they do complement each other. Sometimes they contradict each other and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing when they contradict each other because it puts a warning in front of us and it says, are you absolutely sure that this is a possible play here? As I said, it's only the beginning. It's not the end. But obviously if you're in at the beginning, it's going to be far better in terms of, you know, getting involved early, understanding the process. As you get further into the process, of course, it may get to the point where simply just do not allow anybody else to join in the process if it gets that good. It's not that good yet, but it's getting there. It's getting there. It's becoming very good, but it's not unbelievable yet. Because if it was unbelievable, I wouldn't be selling it yet, would I? I would be selling it for a million pounds. It's not unbelievable. We still have to do some work, surprisingly enough. But you've already recognized the work you've done in terms of those easy to recognize trade signals on the NASDAQ today. Every single one of those trades in isolation made money or scratched, made money and or scratched. That's already paid for your days, your weeks, your months, uh, course. One day's trading, one lot on the NASDAQ, you've already paid for everything. Does that happen every day? No, it still sits inside of everything else. Still sits inside your value, still sits inside the buy side, sell side stack on the book, still sits inside of a delta auction. But it still shows you the possibility of how these trades can form in these trade areas. Have a good one, guys. I'm going to pass you back over to Kim and she'll tell you about what we're going to be planning and doing. I will see you guys in the morning. I'm going to see you in the meantime. Adios amigos. Ciao for now.